Well, Mayor, council members, I truly want to thank you for having us here today to talk about the Winona Bridge Project and it's pretty exciting to be here. So without any further ado, we'll get started. We do have some handouts for you there, the PowerPoint, in case you want to follow along. Also, a copy of the municipal consent guidance and then a one pager on the historical review process. So those for your information. So with that, I just wanted to give you a quick outline before we get into some introductions. So we're going to talk about, we're going to do some introductions. We're going to talk about project goals and some responses to the project goals. We're going to give you some specific project background, you know, schedule, cost, those types of things, environmental assessment, historical review, talk about the new bridge type, a little bit about right-of-way, and then Winona involvement in the project. We'll get to towards the end, municipal consent, and then we'll certainly open it up for questions. So just to give you a little preview on what's to come here. So introductions. The purpose of the meeting is to share project details, to ensure all information needs are met and questions answered as we move forward together. I am Terry Ward, the MinDOT project manager. With me today are some project experts to try and help answer questions if they come up in their specific area. Mark Trogstad Isaacson is the MinDOT district right-of-way engineer, so he is here if any right-of-way specific questions come up. Rick Brown and Dave Nelson from SRF, the consulting firm doing the design, they're here to answer specific technical questions on bridges or the geometric layout or traffic or those types of things. So feel free at any time to ask questions. I'd certainly like to keep this informal. This is more for you folks to kind of get your questions answered and things discussed. So again, let's start with some goals. Goal, first goal that we have is to start construction on the New Mississippi River Bridge as expeditiously as possible. So basically, the message we, MinDOT, has heard is let's get going on the construction out there as quickly as we can. Second goal is to move traffic to the new bridge, again, as expeditiously as possible or as quickly as possible, to minimize the likelihood of detours due to bridge maintenance work on the existing structure. Another goal that we've heard pretty loud and clear from the community is keep the river crossing open during construction. Moving on, a goal that we have is to meet the Chapter 152 funding cap or funding limitation of $142 million, which does not include right-of-way, but that is our funding cap or our funding limitation for the project. Right-of-way is estimated at between $12 to $20 million additional, so if you add those two together, the overall total estimated project cost is $154 to $162 million. And at the bottom, no funding has been diverted from the project. Project funding is different from some potential early preliminary cost estimates that were discussed and given forth by the project team. Some responses to those goals. MinDOT has selected the Winona Bridge Project for the first use of a procurement method called construction manager, general contractor, and we can get into some reasons why if you want to dive a little deeper into that. We've moved up the start of construction. It was previously, construction was starting in 2015. We've moved up the start of construction using this CMGC or construction manager, general contractor, in a window of time between July 2014 to March 2015. We assigned a new project management team because we're bringing a new delivery and procurement method, and we're committed that our construction staging approach will not close the river crossing during construction. So as we lay out the staging and our approach to construction, we will not set up the project so that that crossing is closed during construction.
Terry, do you want to explain a little bit about what the CMGC is?
Yeah, construction manager, general contractor, just kind of at the executive level, is where we hire a contractor to work with us during design. That contractor helps us understand risk, schedule, cost, and delivery, environmental permitting, and all of those aspects of the project very early on. So that helps us move much more quickly towards construction, and it helps to have the issues worked out earlier during the delivery. The other thing it allows us to do on this project, it allows us to break the project into packages or phases, which I'm going to talk about a little bit more. But CMGC or construction manager, general contractor, again, it brings a contractor in early, which is really a benefit in our view, and it allows us to phase the project or package the project with one contracting team all the way through. Okay? So just some responses, a little bit about myself, just to give you an idea of who I am. I've got 25 years at MinDOT, the most experienced project manager in MinDOT District 6. Actually was the project manager for the $232 million Rock 52 project in Rochester that we completed. I was part of the $238 million St. Anthony Falls or 35W Bridge Project Management Team, so I drove back and forth from Rochester each day to the Twin Cities to be part of that effort. And I was previously managing the construction of the Dresbeck Bridge Project before called into service here in Winona. So I'm excited to be here. Actually spent some time living in Winona, so it feels like I'm coming back home. So again, our team is excited about that. The bottom line through my experience is I've learned that partnerships are really key to moving projects along. So the team that we bring is really all about working with the Winona community, and we have a long ways to go. Municipal consent is one step in a long, long, long process. So our team wants to work with you to meet our mutual project goals and successfully deliver the first CMGC project for MinDOT as a partner with the city of Winona. Bottom line. So let's talk a little bit about schedule, shifting gears a little bit now. We have four scheduling tracks that all need to come together to start construction. There's a municipal consent track that'll start our right-of-way process, so we won't make offers to those parcels that we need to acquire out there in businesses until we get through municipal consent. And then we need to get the right-of-way track going so we can meet our phasing dates for construction. We have an environmental assessment and an environmental permits track. So our environmental assessment is the formal environmental document. We need to finalize that so we can get into the environmental permitting process so we can start construction. We have a final design consultant contracts track where we need to get final design consultants on board to start their work. And then we have a construction manager, general contractor contracts track. So there's a lot going on behind the scenes actively right now to bring this project forward. So far, all four scheduling tracks are on schedule for a July 2014 construction start, but with a caveat that is very aggressive, and we cannot guarantee a July start. For example, we're going to start on a mussel survey out in the river here within a few days. And if during that mussel survey that the DNR is doing, if they find a high concentration of federally endangered mussels, it may slow down our schedule. That's just one example of, as we move forward, you know, there may be some things that we're not seeing that come at us. Just one example. So schedule, municipal consent, August 19th is the public hearing. The construction manager, general contractor request for proposals goes out September 3rd on our current schedule. The new bridge final design consultant contract is selected on September 10th. Right-of-way offers start one to two months after municipal consent, approximately 28 parcels, approximately. Environmental assessment, public hearing yet this fall. A finding of no significant impact or a Fonzie, as we call it, on our environmental assessment is scheduled for by the end of the year. And then that'll kick in the environmental permitting process that we're shooting for by July 1st, 2014. Schedule, again, the construction schedule based on staying on the track as planned. Phase 1 construction, July 2014 to March 2015, is the new bridge river piers, where we don't need right-of-way. Phase 2 is scheduled for March 2015, is the remainder of the new bridge and the roadway work necessary to put traffic on that new bridge. Phase 3 is the fall of 2016, which is when we put traffic on the new bridge, and then we start the rehab and reconstruction of the existing bridge and any remaining roadway work. Right now, construction complete is anticipated fall 2019, spring of 2020. Again, on our current schedule with our current scheduling tracks coming forward as we're planning. So just a little bit of overview of the scope of the project. An aerial view showing, obviously, the existing bridge, the new bridge being built upstream, and then the yellow and red and different colors here shows the approach work, a little bit of work on 3rd, there's actually a little bit of work on 2nd, and some work on the other side. And I'll delve a little bit deeper into those aspects of the project. This is a view looking at the new structure. It's a concrete box across the spans here of the through truss. And then at this point here where you see the underdeck of the existing structure, we changed to a concrete beam, and we changed to a concrete beam on the new bridge over here. These piers aren't exactly the way they're going to look, but that just gives you an overview of the scope, looking at the new bridge and how that fits with the existing bridge. This is a picture of the, an overview, an aerial view of the roadway work on the Winona side. This is preliminary design. We've provided the city with a preliminary geometric layout for approval. So this shows the extent of width of lanes, shoulder widths, profile grades are included. And basically, this is what we're providing to the city asking for municipal consent, the right-of-way access and capacity. And we can delve as deep as you'd like into the configuration of intersections, lane widths, the aspects of work, curbing trails. Just go ahead and ask at any time. We've got the experts here that can, you know, answer all of those questions. They put this together.
Terry, do you want to tell people that was 4th Street, maybe? Just so everybody knows.
4th Street, Winona.
And then it goes up to Huff, right?
Yep, Huff would be up here. 43, new bridge going across, excuse me, existing bridge going across, new bridge coming back into town, 3rd, and then 2nd, just to get you orientated. This would be the other side, the Latch Island side. One of the things that's generated some discussion is this trail on the upstream side of the new bridge, coming around and over here. So we'll have, we're planning to have a barrier that goes all the way around to that point right there, so that people have a barrier that brings them around through that movement. Okay, let's shift gears to cost then. Based on our current scope and risk profile, the existing bridge costs we're targeting between $56 and $63 million for the rehab and reconstruction of the existing bridge. The new bridge is between $52 to $59 million. The roadway costs are $7 to $9 million. So if you add all those up, our range is $115 to $131 million, which is less than the $142 million that I talked about previously. But the difference is that we have to pay for all project costs out of that $142 million except right-of-way. So our cost to hire consultants to do design work, our cost to hire firms to go and do geotechnical work, that all has to come within that $142 million. So that note there, the difference is project development and delivery costs. The good news, we feel, is we were able to add a new bridge to the project scope within the funding of $142 million that we've had all along on this project. Turning gears a little bit to city costs. A city of Winona cost estimate was provided in the request for municipal consent letter dated June 30th, 2013. An approximate city cost of $713,000 was provided. That is very much subject to change. MinDOT requires a fully executed cooperative cost agreement to move forward with construction. And I'm going to come back to that point, but MinDOT requires a fully executed cooperative cost agreement to move forward with construction. And I'm going to talk a little bit about why later. That's important. Okay? So just a little bit of where that $713,000 came from. New signal system at 4th and Winona, and if I could point to the layout over here to my right and behind you, just to be clear, that's a new signal system at this intersection right here. Typical MinDOT cost participation is based on the number of legs. MinDOT has two legs, city has two legs. So again, that signal, new signal at that intersection, we've proposed a 50-50 cost split, which would be our traditional cooperative agreement methodology. Next is a right turn lane from 4th to Huff. If I could point to the layout again, there's a right turn lane from 4th onto Huff in this area, coming, I'm going to call it westbound on 4th onto Huff. We've proposed a 50-50 cost split on that, again, as part of that The next item is trail and park amenities under the bridges. We've proposed 100% city cost, and there's $200,000 in that preliminary estimate, or $200,000 of that $713,000 was for potential trail and park amenities underneath the bridges. We haven't worked out the details in final design, what those will be, but just so we have a feel for that's there and that's what's part of that $713. There is nothing in there for city utility upgrades. We feel if there are amenities or improvements to the city utilities, those would be 100% city cost. Any impacts to city utilities caused by our construction, we figured as a MinDOT cost. So if we go out there and need to change a water main because of our construction, we would view that as a MinDOT cost. And that's how we've looked at the job so far. Any questions on this so far, on the cost piece of it? Okay? This is just a picture of the city's future trails and bike waste plans. We've had a lot of great discussion with local groups. We're very cognizant of the city's plans and some trail and levee park issues, and we're committed to work with the local representatives of those. We're not far enough along to have all the details worked out, and we normally wouldn't. But again, we're committed to work with the community on making sure that this project fits the needs for the community as well. Few other things to talk about. Some things are trail maintenance on the new bridge, minor signal maintenance, storm sewer maintenance. Typically, there's a prorated value of mobilization, traffic control, and construction field offices. So whatever city items or city costs, there'd be typically a prorated value for those other bid items, mobilization, traffic control, and construction field offices. And then there would also be a typical add-on for construction engineering. Whatever the city's cost share is of work, it'd be typically 8%. Just to give you a little insight to how our cooperative agreement or our cost agreement process works. Okay, a little bit on decisions made with city staff since the project management team changed. And when I say city staff, you know, that's Brian and Keith and Judy and others that we've worked with. If I can point to the layout again behind you, I apologize a little bit. There's three houses in this area of 4th Street across from the Y and one up here. So three houses along here and one here, that there was discussion of requiring the city to participate in the cost for acquiring those properties. Since the project management team changed, again, working with city staff, we are not asking for city participation, and we are acquiring those properties. The second one is a temporary signal versus a permanent signal at 4th and Huff. We've determined that at this intersection here of 4th and Huff, we are going to need a temporary signal for construction staging because we're going to need to take traffic and move them over to this intersection during some course of the project, meaning traffic coming off the bridge inbound into Winona is all going to have to take a right at some point in time. So what we've worked through is we're able to offer the city, if they want to upgrade that signal from temporary to permanent, MinDOT will cover 70% of the cost, because that's what we would have paid if we had put a temporary signal out there. So that's relatively new, as we've been, again, working with city staff on that. Another thing that we've looked at is, if you look closely at the layout, this right turn lane that I talked about from 4th to Huff is rather short. For staging, we're looking at extending that right turn lane back, so we basically have two lanes coming off the bridge. And that initially was going to be a city cost participation of an extended right turn lane all the way back to this intersection. Because we have to do it for staging purposes, we're looking at doing it and covering that cost as well without any city participation. The last item I want to talk about is working with SRF. We actually looked at 4th Street in this area, and we did a traffic operations memorandum to try and help the city decide, do they want to allow parking in front of the Y or not? Is two-way operations of that street or one-way operations the preferred city traffic operation? How soon, if we didn't signalize this intersection, would a signal likely be needed? And that was really just to try and help, you know, city staff and the community make some decisions specifically in this area, what they would like to do within the project scope. And we forwarded that to city staff. Okay? Another project city cost is there is the potential of some city project revenue for right-of-way acquisition. We're going to need a permanent easement and actually a temporary easement as well from the Winona Port Authority. So looking at this, we're going to need a permanent easement in this area from the Port Authority, excuse me, I should have put a temporary easement here for construction staging. So there'd be potentially some revenue coming to the city in terms of those easement acquisitions. Shifting gears a little bit to the environmental assessment or EA document, I mentioned a EA public hearing coming this fall. That's part of our National Environmental Policy Act or our NEPA process. We have to follow federal requirements for that. There'll be opportunity for public and agency formal comment. It'll be an actual public hearing. What's required at the end of this environmental assessment process is a finding of no significant impact or a Fonzie from the FHWA. So all the environmental impacts are documented in our EA, including things like mussels impacts, you know, wildlife, wetlands, bridge types, historical types. It's all put into our environmental document. We hold a formal public hearing. All public comment is considered. And then at the end of the day, the FHWA needs to issue a Fonzie or, again, a finding of no significant impact for MinDOT to move forward with construction of the project. And again, the Fonzie we're anticipating by the end of the year, which will allow us to move forward at that point with permits and then ultimately construction. So in our EA, which is our environmental assessment document that we've prepared, we do have a concrete segmental box girder for the main river spans of the new bridge. That's our recommended bridge type. And that's shown in the background. A lower-profile concrete segmental box with the pre-stressed concrete beam approaches. This is our recommended bridge type. So how does that happen?
Is that subject at all to change, that box girder type for a arch span or a cable span? Are any of those options possible?
This recommendation goes into the EA, the environmental assessment. Public comment is taken, and we don't have what we call a preferred alternate until we get a Fonzie. So through that whole process, could the bridge type change? Potentially, it could. This is not cast in stone until we get a Fonzie or finding of no significant impact from the FHWA. Again, this is, just to be clear, this is our recommended option. It's not yet our preferred alternate. Okay? And we'll talk a little bit about your question a little bit more. So just how that happens, that process, environmental assessment, new bridge, our historical review team did their work, provided their findings. Our MinDOT district looked at cost and maintenance. We have our feelings or findings from the district perspective. And then we've had some, already some environmental agency feedback, for example, U.S. Fish and Wildlife migratory birds. That's all fed into a process where we pick a recommended EA bridge type, again, which we've done.
Just a curious question. Who has the ultimate decision on the design of the bridge? You're talking about, you know, making all of these reviews and studies. Who makes the final decision on the design of the bridge?
Yeah, again, the bridge type and the final details in terms of the project, really, there's two steps in the process. Step number one is municipal consent, which technically is all about our geometric layout and the geometry of the project. And step two is the environmental assessment or the Fonzie process, which talks about, again, like things like the bridge type and the historical review. So step one for the city through municipal consent, you're really approving our geometric layout at that point. If you grant us municipal consent, you're saying you agree with our geometric layout and the drawing we're showing behind you. You're agreeing with roadway widths, shoulder widths, those types of features. And the next step in the EA with that process and public hearing, that's where the FHWA at the end, they have to issue a Fonzie that says the bridge type is okay, the historical review, the public comment and feedback, you know, all is what they find to be acceptable. And then the Fonzie will tell us what that final bridge type is. Does that help?
Sort of. It's still kind of confusing.
What if we don't like this bridge? I think what we're getting at is what if the public doesn't like this design? Who has the ultimate say in what design goes up on our river? That's what I think we're trying to understand.
Federal Highway Administration.
Got it.
Again, through that EA process and the Fonzie process.
So that's, okay.
That's what you're getting at, right?
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep, sorry about that. So the historical review, the existing bridge is eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. To date, we have written concurrence from the State Historic Preservation Office on the proposed scope of the rehab and reconstruction work on the existing bridge. And through the process, we need to consult and work with SHPO in the process. The historical review team reviewed three bridge types for the new bridge. Again, the recommended concrete segmental box girder, the lower-profile, the tide arch, a little higher-profile bridge.
Is that similar to the one that crosses the river in La Crosse?
Correct. The tide arch is similar to the Cass Street Bridge. It's similar to the new bridge in Hastings.
Thank you.
And a cable stay with a series of cables and high towers.
Are there any of those along the river that...
The only cable stay I'm aware of in the area is the Lowry Avenue Bike Pedestrian Bridge in the cities. Rick, is there...
That's the only one I can think of as far as Mississippi River bridges. I think you have to look quite a ways down the river to be able to come to the state.
Okay, thank you.
So again, the historical review team is recommending the concrete box girder. Due to the historical team finding, it resulted in no adverse impact on the existing bridge. There's a public meeting for next Monday at the Armory, 4 to 6, with a formal presentation at 5. Kristin Jomler from MinDOT, who led the historical review team, is planning to be there to discuss and present this process and answer any questions. You do have a one-pager that I, in your packet there, that I gave you to look at as well.
Another question, you know, these are three types. How many different types were considered when you were in this design phase and looking at both the practical aspect and the aesthetic aspect of a river crossing with an additional bridge here in Winona?
I'm not following the question specifically.
So were these the only three types you looked at?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Terry?
Yes?
Price-wise, from the box girder to the other two, what is the difference in price?
Oh, I can answer that if you hold that for a second. No problem, it's coming.
Okay.
So the new, next slide is good segue. So the cost for the tide arch is roughly $14 to $15 million more money, which is not in our current project budget. The cable stay is even more. The cable stay is even more. Another thing that, just to be cognizant of, is our environmental document, our preliminary bridge work, everything we've done to date is based on our recommended bridge type. So to start construction, if the type of bridge changes, there's a fairly significant impact in terms of when we can start construction out there. Just, I wanted to make sure that was clear. We would have to go back, redo our environmental assessment. We'd have to go back and redo our preliminary bridge plans and then not only find the funding, but kind of restart some of our processes.
Is that all federal money? Is it 142 million? That's why it's federally funded?
Can I take questions from the audience? Is that okay?
We'll take this one. Sure.
No problem. The question was, is the 142 million, is that all federal money? No, the part of it is federal money. It really, in this case, wouldn't matter. We have to go through the federal NEPA process for the project, irregardless of the federal money or not. So that's, the FHWA and their role would be the same whether there was federal dollars or not. Okay, the new bridge type, this is really the view that I believe Kristin Jomler next week will talk about. In her opinion and her team, that lower profile has less of a visual impact on the existing bridge versus, if I can back up, versus the visual impact of this higher-profile tide arch and this higher-profile cable stay. In their opinion, these two higher-profile bridges detract from the historical context and character of the existing bridge. This is a view that gets a lot of discussion locally and it's, you're on the existing bridge. Upriver is the new bridge, which blocks some views. And we're not saying it doesn't, we're not debating that. Kristin and Jomler and our historical team will tell you that the visual views from the existing bridge are not part of the historical review criteria that they look at. That's more visual quality than historical quality or historical context. This is a visualization of the new bridge coming across. This isn't finalized yet. We don't have things like final railings on here. But I haven't heard, I haven't heard a lot of discussion about this bridge, the lower profile and the openness versus a tide arch or cable stay. I've driven Cass Street several times and today, actually, I went through Hastings again. I've driven that several times. Just drive those and when you drive through there, the arch and the vertical elements that are on there, they really grab your view versus this type of an open structure. So I just ask you to think about that or ponder that different view that comes forward with the different bridge types. This particular view is one, when I used to live here and I was driving back from Wisconsin, the first thing I would look at is, you know, I knew I was getting close to home when I saw the Sugarloaf. And then the second thing is when I saw the Winona Bridge, I knew I was, you know, much closer. So I just put this up there as kind of an icon or the historical landmark. The Cass Street Bridges, which has been talked about and brought forward. The existing bridge down there was replaced roughly 10 years ago. The existing bridge was eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. The work that was done on the bridge was an adverse effect, meaning it is not any longer eligible for the National Register. It's been changed so much that it was an adverse effect. The team that did the design on this did not look at, therefore, the historical aspect of the new bridge. They never even considered the historical impact of the new tide arch to the existing bridge because the existing bridge is no longer of, you know, historical context. That's the difference down there versus Winona. Unless there's any questions, we'll turn to right-of-way. Again, we have Mark Troxstedt, Isaacson, here to talk about right-of-way. I just wanted to put this up there and see if there's any specific right-of-way questions or thoughts or comments at all. Anybody at all for right-of-way? Yes?
Just because I got some emails, can you clarify how you determined which route was the best one for us to take for the building of the new bridge? Because I know that the original drawings had six or seven options and then we were down to this one. And one of the questions I got just last night was, why was this the picked route? Especially considering the number of properties that are coming off of the tax roll? So if I could have an answer for him, it'd make my job easier.
Yeah. Rick actually worked quite, excuse me, quite in-depth on that process. Rick, you want to handle that one or Dave? Talk a little bit about the selection of the preferred, the different routes and alignments?
I'll think about that for a second. As you mentioned, council member, we did look at several routes. We looked at bridges that would come across the river. If I may outstand up and use the layout here to point.
If you could maybe take the microphone too?
Is this better for the record if I use the microphone?
Yes.
I'll try and go back.
You could pull it out until you're with you if you wish.
Thank you.
Thank you. All of the routes that we looked at really came together here on Latch Island because, of course, we had a very small space there that we were constrained to and needing to match the highway coming across from the Wisconsin side and also wanting to not have any impact on the next bridge, what we call the back-channel bridge. Then we looked at different routes, different ways that the bridge could diverge from there, more from the standpoint of what was the best place to, if we put in a new bridge, what was the best place to tie it down, so to speak, on the Winona side? It's very easy to say, well, the existing bridge comes down here at the location by the YMCA. That's a natural location. It's where people are accustomed to coming across. But since we're looking at this new, we should look at the potential of tying down in Huff Street. We looked actually at Harriet Street, some of the other streets going off to the east. And if I pull back a step further, earlier in the process during what we call the scoping phase, we actually looked at the potential for completely realigning the crossing. We looked at some alignments that were up in the area of Pelzer Street. The comment was made by people, you know, we've got the great separated railroad crossing up there. Maybe that's a more natural place to put the river crossing. We also looked at some potential alignments farther to the east at Mankato. All of those alignments had various disadvantages to them. A lot of them had to do with the wildlife refuge, Fish and Wildlife Service concerns, also some of the engineering concerns of opening up a new crossing across the river. And that's why the, what I call the remote options, were dismissed fairly early on in the process in scoping. It got to be a little bit more involved as we were looking at where to touch down in town, but we looked at all the various impacts that would come along, right-of-way impacts, traffic circulation, where the historic districts are located in town, all of the things of this nature. From an engineering perspective, traffic circulation was a really big impact that we were looking at. The traffic that comes off of the bridge, when it comes to the bridge, it disperses fairly quickly and in very rough terms, kind of goes about a third in each direction, about a third east, about a third south and about a third west and back over in Riverview. When we applied that circulation pattern to say a bridge touching down in Huff, and then we also had the issue of if a new bridge comes right into Huff Street and touches down in Huff, what happens to the traffic that's already in Huff Street coming, say, from the south and wants to go down in Riverview because now we've brought the bridge down in their way? So they either have to circulate in a different pattern around the blocks or have a, almost like a frontage road system there, really gets quite complex quickly. So all of that going into the decision process and kind of being boiled down together, determining that this still did appear to be the best place to bring the traffic in, having the two bridges in parallel, a lot of obvious benefits there with the two bridges. If either bridge were to be closed in the future for some reason for maintenance or any kind of a happenstance, the other bridge can still carry two-way traffic. So then just a little bit more on that question. So we'll show the different alignments that were looked at in our environmental assessment. And again, the public will have an opportunity, if they have questions or concerns or feedback on our recommended alignment, they can comment on that in that process. Okay? If there's nothing specifically on right-of-way, then we'll just keep going here. So let's switch gears a little bit to Winona involvement. So there's been over 40 technical advisory group, public advisory group and public meetings involving Winona community members that have been held, literally hundreds of MINDAT and city staff meetings. We recently presented at the Winona Chamber and the Levy Park Group. We've met and talked with local businesses, including the Y, Dahl, Winona Rental, among others, dropped off business cards at businesses we plan to acquire in case they have any questions or concerns or comments. So on deck, some things that are coming is we're going to meet with the city staff in the Winona Chamber, Transportation Committee to start talking about construction staging. We have a public meeting next Monday that we've talked about. So we've formed a visual quality committee. We're really excited about, we've got approximately 15 members from the Winona community, some great participation. We do not have an unlimited budget, but there's no firm funding limitations going into the visual quality process. And we hope to have a visual quality committee kickoff meeting mid to late August with roughly six meetings and again, a lot of feedback from the Winona community. Yes?
Is that committee going to be looking at, like what, the type of railing, the type of maybe marks in the concrete that make it look more attractive? Is that the kind of stuff they're going to be looking at?
Exactly.
The beautifying of it?
Colors, types of railing, treatments on retaining walls, peer configurations, lighting, trails, amenities, parks, all those types of things as part of visual quality. Absolutely.
Bump outs?
Bump outs on the new bridge.
Is that membership in that committee been already picked or is it open for people to basically want to get involved?
We put out a news release and we had the closing for volunteers last Friday at 4:00 PM. We haven't formed the committee yet and if there is somebody that would really, really want to participate, let me know ASAP. But we will form that committee here probably this week, within the next few days and try and finalize that.
Just a question with right-of-way. What is the process of obtaining a property and, you know, what is the, not asking for a direct number, but what is the compensation? And, you know, if I have an active business, you purchase it, what's my next move as a
Again, I'm Mark Troxstedt, Isaacson, right-of-way engineer. The right-of-way acquisition process is pretty well spelled out in the federal regulations. What we do, what we're currently doing right now in anticipation of getting municipal consent is I have appraisers hired. And we're in the process of getting the appraisals done on all of the total take parcels on the proper, on the project. They're determining the fair market value of the real estate. So what would a willing buyer, willing seller pay? You know, kind of, best way to bring it in is you want to sell your house, you know what you want to sell it for. Someone wants to buy it, they don't want to pay what you say, but you negotiate to settlement. That's what we, that's what our goal is in right-of-way. We make an offer and then we wait for a counter offer from the owner. Then we work together. We also participate. Federal law and state law allows us to reimburse owners up to $5,000 on commercial properties to get their own appraisal. And we encourage the owner to get their own appraisal so it'll help us in the negotiation process. Our goal is to get a number out there to the owners within one to two months after municipal consent because they're in limbo land right now. They know this project's coming. They want a plan for relocation, but they don't know what kind of budget they have right now. So by us making an offer, they at least have a number that they can look at and see if they can work with. Then we negotiate. As with all things, our appraiser may miss something, their appraiser may find something. We look at it. If it's reasonable, we add it to the price. If we get to a point of impasse, then we do have to go through the eminent domain process. And that's a, takes six months to get into the court system to get title and possession. So that's kind of tied to the construction timeline. So if you, if you're looking at construction of the new bridge in March of 15, we're hoping to get all the parcels acquired between January of 14 and September of that same year. And the more lead time we can give these businesses, the more opportunities they have to find a new place to relocate to. Any other right-of-way questions?
I just have a question on existing businesses. Do you put any value on goodwill or the time between the time that the site is acquired and perhaps another site is open for that business? Is there transition value that the state gets involved with?
Primarily, we get involved with real estate value. You know, we're buying the real estate and then we have relocation that we can also participate in, assisting them in finding a new site, assist them in moving costs, some re-establishment costs, reconnecting. The only time we get into goodwill is if the business goes out of business. If that business cannot re-establish, then they can go for what's called loss-agoing concern. And that's where they have been destroyed by the project. To be honest, there's, there is going to be some challenges to find relocation sites for all of the businesses that are impacted. However, because of the timeframe we're looking at with hopefully making offers within the next month or two, we're going to have enough lead time for those businesses to be able to search for a replacement site. If we agree on a price, we'll also lease back to the business, allowing them to stay here as long as possible till they get their new site up and running.
So there is a lot of going...
So they can shut down, they can close their doors one day here and reopen at the new site the next day. There's a lot of flexibility in that based on the timeframes we have right now.
And that'll change depending on...
Any delay, any delay in getting out there and making offers kind of puts the owners of those businesses in a tighter and tighter timeframe. A lot of these owners have been talking to me for six months to a year now. They want to, they want me to make an offer and I'm ready to go, but I have to wait.
Good. Thank you.
And the city staff has actually met with a number of the businesses to help them potentially find relocation sites.
I would expect that.
We've spent some time with the businesses themselves too.
And I have a consultant that's also required to assist on, provide relocation assistance. So we've, we've done a report, we've located and anytime we find any property that's available that they might be interested in, we're also forwarding that information to those businesses as well.
I think councilperson Alexander brought up the idea of, you know, how do we balance this loss of property taxes that are going to be, you know, used for the bridge and continue to maintain that property tax base that's very important to the city?
We can't compensate the city for that loss of the tax base, but kind of the way we look at it is, our goal is to re-establish those businesses in the community. So what they're going to be doing is finding vacant land or underutilized land and redevelop it to their use, which is going to increase the tax base or it'll bring more of that tax base back to the city.
And my comment would be, Winona has very little undeveloped available land. So that's the quandary, I think, that...
Yep.
That I'm concerned about. That's right. What percentage of the property that you acquire will be, have the potential to be redeveloped when you're done with the project?
A lot of it's going to depend on what happens as the project develops. The owners that we acquire from have the right of first refusal if we don't need it in the future. However, the majority of owners that I've dealt with in the past, if you do a total acquisition of their property, they don't want to, and they go through all the effort to find a new site and a new location, they don't want to come back into the same area. But they still have the right to. So kind of as we go through the right-of-way acquisition process, we'll be talking with those owners. You know, if we, if we work and we get them... You know, if we re, if we work and we get them reestablished in another location, if they wanna have the ability to purchase whatever excesses is remaining after the project, they have the right to it, but they can also waive that right if they choose. And so we'll be working with them.
And the city has an opportunity, if I understand it right?
The city would be number two on the list.
Can the city redevelop that property?
The city can.
It has to be of public use.
The city can purchase it for redevelopment. For parks, we can usually do an agreement for a dollar, as long as it's for a park. When you get into redevelopment, we kind of gotta go to the auditors, depending on how the funding was for the right-of-way acquisition. Sometimes they want fair market value from the city of vacant land, so the city would purchase it from MINDOT at the fair market value and then pass it on and redevelop it. It's kind of at the auditor's discretion, depending on how the funding is.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we left off visual quality committee. And again, if anybody wants to try and get on that to get ahold of me real quick here in the next couple of days. So this is just one view, the question about, you know, the role of the visual quality committee. We're already starting to develop some background materials. This is one potential view of a new pier. This will be one of at least a couple that we put together. So the visual quality committee will look at this and look at the pros and cons of, of ideas like this for the peers on the new structure. So Winona involvement, people tend to be passionate about bridges, and that's okay. We're gonna have some good discussion and some good debates about bridges, and that's part of the process. But together, we're building for the future. This, in our view, this is really a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity because, for example, the new bridge design life is a hundred years. And we think collectively and collaboratively, working together, we can create and deliver our project for the future of Winona. This is, from the 35W Bridge, we, we had a Casting the Future effort where kids could come out and cast squares with their names on them and school names, and it actually got those square concrete blocks were actually incorporated into the abutments of one of the bridges. So just an example of how, you know, we can certainly work together with some level of community involvement on this project. As mentioned, I worked on the 35W Bridge. When we went through visual quality on that particular bridge, it was really interesting. The local community wanted a lower-profile bridge because of the historical St. Anthony Falls and the Washington Avenue Arch Bridge. So this was really their bridge type of choice as they've looked at it in view of the, kind of the higher profile. And this particular bridge is the same as the concrete segmental box that we're proposing or recommending down here. So we can switch gears a little bit to municipal consent. There's a handout that was on your table there. Basically, in that particular handout, it's the process of municipal consent. The city can approve, disapprove, or condition their municipal consent. There is an appeal process that's laid out there. I mentioned before a future cost agreement, so I wanted to just circle back to this. Granting municipal consent does not mean you're granting MINDOT the right to go build the project. We still, again, we need a fully executed, city-agreed-upon cost agreement. And until we have that cost agreement, we can't go build the project. So the point I wanna make today is that, in my opinion, with municipal consent, we're really asking you to allow us to start some pretty serious investments in the project. Right-of-way is gonna kick in, final design, we're gonna start to bring a lot more investment in this project. And the pendulum kind of switches because we need you at the end of that process before we actually go build things to approve our cost agreement. We have to continue to work with you. As a project manager, if we get to a point where all that investment takes place and we can't get through a cost agreement, I failed at my job. I really have. So I just, the point I wanna make is, you know, the kind of the pendulum kind of shifts in terms of you grant municipal consent, but it really kind of comes back on MINDOT to, to be a good partner and a good steward with you as we work forward. Closing, we have a project website with some more information. Certainly look at that if you haven't.
Terry, how will this affect Army Municipal Marina, Dix Marina across the river?
We have to work through, first of all, we have to work through the staging of construction over there. We got, we haven't delved down into that detail yet, but we'll get there, we'll work that out. The real big change there is we're actually, I'm gonna turn back some right-of-way to the city. The facilities there are on MINDOT right-of-way. So if you look at the right-of-way map, and Mark can point it out, we're actually, there's a little piece of right-of-way that we're actually gonna, I don't know if it's shown on there.
We show the, the existing right-of-way lines, I don't know the, do we have any sort of visual?
If we look, if we look back here on the screen behind you, if you could, the piece I'm talking about is a little piece right here that read, the existing right-of-way goes right through the building. So as part of that, we're gonna, we're, basically, we're cleaning up the right-of-way over there. Mark, is that correct?
Yeah.
Once the project's complete. You said right through the building?
It does, it goes.
Right to the metro.
That, that green line, if you follow it, it goes right through the building. So that building is on MINDOT right-of-way today, and we're gonna clean that up through the process. That's the significant right-of-way aspect of that area, in my opinion, besides the staging and the construction and how to figure all that out.
And you've been in discussions with them over there yet?
I dropped the business card off and I haven't heard from them, but I, I've been over there asking to meet with them. I dropped off the business card, absolutely.
Can I ask a question about the city cost part of this?
Absolutely, anything.
Okay. When I first heard about the bridge project, there was never a discussion of the city cost portion. Now, I'm guessing it's fairly common that cities have to come in with some funding. I'm wondering if you can help us by telling us maybe Hastings Payin or Stillwater, so we have a frame of reference of what other cities have had to pay to have bridges built in their communities? That might help, too, when we're talking to the public about $713,000.
Sure. I can tell you on Rock 52 in Rochester, it was 232 million. City Rochester paid roughly 11 million.
That helps.
I can tell you on the St. Anthony Falls Bridge, 35W, there's a box culvert that was added for a bike trail under the St. Anthony Falls Bridge. That was 100% city Minneapolis cost to the tune of $500,000 just for that box culvert. I can certainly provide, I can provide Hastings and, you know, other projects if you'd like.
I would, that'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Certainly do that. I'll provide that to city staff.
Could you comment on pedestrian, bicycle, you mentioned, you brought up the addition of what one city has done, but how does this project fit in? Would the existing pedestrian part of the bridge be closed in traffic pedestrian-wise, bicycling-wise, moved to the new bridge?
Yep, I'll give it, I'll give it a shot. So the existing bridge, obviously on the downstream side, has the, the retrofitted bike facility on there. So that comes off. That really helps us out structurally on that, on that existing bridge, it really does. On the new bridge then, on the upstream side, we actually have a 12-foot trail, 12-foot wide, which is much wider than the existing. And as they go across, excuse me, as they go across, they follow this brown around to that shoulder where there's a bike, where there's a bike facility on that back channel bridge on that side.
So that gets them around, across, out of traffic and?
Correct, yes. The other thing we're looking at is the city Levy Park and Bike Group has talked about some bike facilities in here to try and connect up this facility on the new bridge down over to the bike facility that feeds through here. So we're, again, we're committed to work with the community on that discussion and see if we can make that happen as part of the project.
I have a basic question on your construction manager, general contractor decision. Basically, you know, it's, it's been a kind of a proposal and bid and, and, you know, go ahead and build it process in the past, and, and, you know, we're kind of the guinea pig here in Winona for all of this, this new type of getting things done. A, why is, why is that, you know, why are you doing it with us? And, and, and is there, is there an advantage to us to have that method of, of process go forward?
Great question. CMGC, construction manager, general contractor, the real benefit of this project, again, is it allows us to break the project into phases or packages. If we were to do that with our traditional bid-build environment, we would have separate contractors, separate contracts, a lot of potential coordination issues that get messy very quickly. So this is, CMGC is hiring one contracting team to help us in design. That same team is the only team that initially bids on the packages of work. It's not put out for competitive bid. And we can put those packages of work out when the restrictions on the schedule get resolved. So when right-of-way is delivered, environmental permits are delivered, utilities are all figured out, we can put out a construction package. In our traditional world, we've gotta wait till all of those things are all worked out across the board. It's a much slower process. The other thing is we don't have to advertise for competitive bids. That takes two to three months at least just by itself, that process. So that's really why we're, we're bringing CMGC to the table. It really, in our opinion, fits this project and the goal of trying to get under construction quickly and to, and to phase the job to keep the, the phases going rapidly after that.
So this includes the right-of-way as well as the build?
The, the right-of-way is delivered like we typically deliver right-of-way, but right-of-way is one of the delivery factors that lends to use of CMGC. Soon as Mark gets right-of-way delivered, let's just say, for example, he gets right-of-way on a parcel where we can build some bridge piers, we could, in theory, put a design package together and go to that contractor and start building those bridge piers relatively quickly. That's just in general, that's a high-level overview.
How's the, if I may, it might be useful, Terry, if you could just talk for a second about how the costs are cross-checked between what the contractor offers in the cases you've described and how you're looking at those costs?
Yeah, just real briefly, the contractor is competing against an independent cost estimate that's blind. They don't see it. They're not competing against other contractors, they're competing against a contractor-style independent cost estimate, and they have to be within 10% when they put their bid in, or we don't even consider award of the project. If they're within 10%, then it goes forward for award review and an independent engineer's estimate. It's, it does work differently.
Yeah, I, I guess I raise the question simply because I think there was an article in Sunday's Tribune about other communities and their challenges with construction costs being significantly higher than, you know, than original estimates. I mean, the seasons are, and we've had this happen at this table as well, where late-season bidding is, is very difficult. We postpone projects because of that, and I'm wondering if this particular process takes a little bit of that out of, out of the?
If we're, if we're able to tailor our design to the strengths of the contractor and, and deal with construction coordination issues upfront, absolutely, that, that's a better pricing for everybody, no question about it. And hopefully, cost growth during the project should be much less than our traditional model as well, because you got the contractor at the table during design.
If I can ask one more question. You know, the, the public hearing is August 12th, and that's gonna be at our National Guard Armory. What can people who attend that meeting expect to, to have input toward the project? You know, a lot of times, public hearings are, are, are held simply to, to meet a public hearing criteria. And, and I, I really, I'm concerned that people who will, as you say in your slide, are passionate about bridges, have an opportunity to, to perhaps have an impact on, on how this 100-year design is going to serve our community.
Yeah, the, the public meeting next week is really about information sharing so that people understand where we are at in the process, so they understand that we have a public formal hearing coming up on the EA and how that process works and how they can provide their feedback and comments. It's really, you know, information sharing and educational, so that everybody that wants to understands how the process works as we move forward. I've talked to quite a few people that are a little confused on where we are at and how the things, you know, the mechanics of how things work. And then Kristin, again, there's been a lot of questions about the historical process. She'll be there to, to answer those.
It's not a formal public hearing, it's a public meeting where they'll, where people will be able to get a lot of information and make their comments.
It's not required. We're, we're conducting it to share information.
Okay.
There, there will be a public hearing at the next council meeting concerning the municipal consent issue.
Okay, thank you.
Legally, can structures or parking or active parkland be allowed under a bridge?
The, the existing parking that's out there today under the existing bridge will need to go away because of homeland security. So parking under the new bridges on MINDOT right-of-way, I am 99.9% sure will not be allowed from a homeland security perspective. However, there can be things like parked facilities, trails, amenities like that.
Any permanent structures at all?
Anything, anything under the existing bridges has to go through at a minimum a MINDOT permitting process and a historical review. So I can't, you know, I, we have to go through that process to see if it's eligible or not.
Thank you.
Now, that's true only of structures, but the park, I mean, what somebody might do as far as parkland, that doesn't have to be reviewed, does it?
We would still, we would still need to issue a limited use permit because it'd be on our right-of-way, and we would still do a historical review, yes. Just to make sure that we're not changing the context of the historical value of that existing bridge. With that, if there's no more questions, thank you for, for having us here tonight.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you for coming. We'll take a five-minute break and be back at 6:30.